Welcome to the Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four edition of the Lake Forest City Council. The city clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly. I roll Mayor Tac.
Here.
Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Clemens is absent. Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Powers?
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Here.
Alderman Levert?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Alderman Walder?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Please rise, and Alderman Notes will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Appreciate the do-over.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item number one is comments by Mayor, and the first thing we'd like to talk about is the recent developments at Deer Path and Route forty-one. We have some visuals. I don't know if any of you pay any attention when you come in or out of the city through that route, but it's really quite amazing what's been going on there since the bridge reconstruction project. The plantings are quite amazing, and I think that in the next couple of years, that will be a fairly spectacular intersection. Similar to other additions or initiatives like the Deer Path Streetscape Project, the city worked closely with the Civic Beautification Committee to develop a landscaping plan for the area of Deer Path and forty-one. Once the Route forty-one Deer Path Pump Station project was completed, Parks and Forestry crews got going implementing the landscaping plan, which included planting forty new trees. This is a remarkable number, fifteen hundred shrubs and perennials, and twenty-five tons of bluestone chips. It's really, you know, we talk a lot about gateways to Lake Forest, and I think everybody would agree that's a gateway to Lake Forest. So it's pretty spectacular what we've done with that, and kudos to the city staff. They've done a lot of work on that. Next item I'd like to talk about is the Forest Park Beach Pathway Project. I was just down there looking at that last week. It's pretty remarkable. They're starting to put in the landscaping and lighting. I think the opening is October thirteenth at one P. M., the grand opening. And once again, I think this is a remarkable testament to the public-private partnerships that we do in the city. Final thing I'd like to talk about is the remarkably successful Coffee in the Park with your Aldermen. Wards, what was it, one and two were this past weekend. I think they were well-attended, forty to fifty people at each. And we have wards three and four coming up, what is it, next weekend, this weekend?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay. Very good. So I encourage people in the wards to come out, talk to the Aldermen, and see what they have to say. The next item on the agenda is comments by city manager, so I'll turn it over to Manager Wishaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. Good evening. Included on tonight's omnibus agenda is a request authorizing city membership in the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative, which is a pooled health insurance cooperative existing or consisting of one hundred and sixty-two Illinois local governments and growing by the month, I understand. And before I invite Human Resources Director Amber Campbell up to review the recommendation, I just wanted to provide a little context for the city council and background on how we arrived here. And so the city periodically reviews our health insurance offerings, both at an executive staff level but also through an interdisciplinary benefits committee that exists that has representation from every city department. And driven by recent feedback that we had solicited from staff, both through, from our workforce, both through employee surveys, through some of my city manager conversations with work groups, we, you know, I think we came more attuned to some frustrations that staff were having with the current benefit plan. And so with that in mind, we tasked a project team that was led by Amber, by Assistant City Manager George Asaku and Finance Director Elizabeth Hollab, working in partnership with the benefits committee to look at different options that could provide for a more user-friendly customer and employee experience, but also do so in a way that was financially sustainable for the city and preferably that could help mitigate some of the year-over-year volatility that is common in the industry, particularly when you're a self-insured entity. And so that project team has been working on this for almost a year now, and there is some more work that still needs to be done in terms of finalizing plan design options. But tonight is an important first step, and I feel really good about the work that the staff has put into it to get us to this point. So with that, I'll invite, there she is, I'll invite Amber up to the podium to give just a quick high-level overview of the recommendation that's before you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. Thank you for the introduction as well. I would like to start off with the employee feedback portion of our process. As the city manager mentioned, we utilize a benefits committee as well as a project plan team, and those two teams work in, they work in parallel to solicit feedback, both from, using feedback from the employees to help inform their process. And so, as the city manager mentioned, we've been working on this for over a year now. We began identifying potential vendors around August of late last year, and we have more recently, this last spring, engaged our benefits committee to harness that employee feedback, understand their perspective, and help guide this process. And so our recent employee survey, which we've tasked the benefits committee with reviewing and analyzing that data, you can see here a very important portion of that survey, which identified the most important planned features from our staff. Employees were asked to select their top five choices among these, and you can clearly see that a easy-to-understand claims processing, as well as easy-to-understand benefits, were of the utmost importance to staff right alongside the availability of having choices. So a broad network of providers was also of the utmost importance. And so that employee feedback and through that process and all those comments that we obtained from staff helped us identify that most of our issues were not related to coverage levels, but were rather related to our third-party administrator and our complex plan design. In general, it just had a lack of user-friendliness that made it, you know, really challenging for those when they're at the doctor's office trying to explain our third-party administrator or our unique plans, and that's where the bulk of the frustrations were coming from. That being said, we then were looking at what some of those options are out there in the marketplace. And as the city manager mentioned, we were exploring local pool options. We explored many options. We did a, we took an apples-to-apples approach when looking at different vendors and identifying if we were to make certain changes that our employee work group is asking for, you know, how do those measure up on an even basis? We identified a couple of local pools, and one pool certainly rose to the top. One of the reasons they rose to the top was because of their flexible plan design options. Some local pools require you to stay with a fixed plan design, which doesn't leave a lot of flexibility long-term, and benefits are a really vital part of our employee compensation package. When we identified and did that apples-to-apples approach, we found that our pooled options garnered significant savings over our current self-insured model. And the reason is pooling all those resources and that headcount, you then have better access to group discounts and you have better purchasing power. Through the work with the benefits committee, we identified that the IPBC model, the co-op pool that we are recommending here this evening, addressed many of the employee concerns. They utilize Blue Cross Blue Shield, Delta Dental, and VSP for many of your main providers. That provider acceptance is going to be key in helping address a lot of those issues with our staff. Blue Cross Blue Shield is also known for their customer service model, and so that will really help with streamlining that claims process for our employees where a bulk of our frustrations are at today. As I mentioned, plan design flexibility will help us be nimble over time and pivot in order to address such a key benefit to our staff. And so we'll be able to make those modifications as we did as a self-insured employer, but under the pool option, retain that flexibility and really try and meet the needs of staff long-term. Another key component is the customer service model through IPBC. Because they have a hundred and sixty-two and growing number of members or number of local groups that are a part of the co-op, they have such vast purchasing power and that large headcount that they're able to access an even elevated level of customer service through Blue Cross Blue Shield and have dedicated customer service staff that know our plans and are able to help with those pain points. So not only does IPBC have that dedicated administrative support, but they also have a heightened level of customer service support available to our members through Blue Cross Blue Shield. The IPBC, the IPBC model has a number of different components which really helped, which helped us understand that this was the right model to go with. Not only do they have the purchasing power, as we spoke about, and the customer service team, which helps ease those administrative burdens and help our staff and that plan design flexibility, but they also have a very stable and predictable model. They have dividends that they pay out each year to staff. They really do have a full-service model that doesn't just stop with medical, dental, and vision benefits. They have value-added programs such as EAP Wellness Program. They have made sure to include virtual visits, which we know are so important here this day and age. And so the model overall is something that, when looked at by the benefits committee, they really understood that each pain point that was identified through our benefits process, through soliciting feedback from employees, IPBC is able to address most of those pain points simply based on their overarching model, their holistic model that looks to address, I mean, this is the work that they do. They specialize in this area, and they're able to meet the needs of a vast number of employers. And many of our peer communities around us that we use as comparable communities to benchmarks ourselves against are a part of IPBC. Another key component, as Jason mentioned, is that financial sustainability piece. There are both financial and operational benefits to moving to this pooled option. Smoothing that volatility that we see year-over-year. As a self-insured model, we have seen negative ten percent renewal rates, and we've seen over twenty percent renewal rates. And so that can be really challenging to budget for. And so joining IPBC really smoothes out that experience, making budgeting a lot more predictable. IPBC has seen a two-point-one percent to a three percent year-over-year, five-year average for their renewal rates. Whereas currently with our self-insured model, we're at over five percent on average right now. And so we have had good years and we've had bad years, but it's smoothing out those peaks and those valleys is really helpful when we're talking about budgeting such a large expenditure. Another component that's really important is that IPBC caps those premium increases at plus or minus five percent. And so that's really important. That's how they are able to then smooth that out for those employers. Another component is the dividends that they offer. They have consistently provided dividends. It's two-point-five percent most recently for PPO plans and almost six percent for their HMO plans. So when the group is doing well, they're able to pay back those dividends to employers. We estimate a one-year savings pending final plan design changes, as the city manager mentioned. This is an important benchmark, but there's still work to be done, up to a nine-point-one percent medical plan savings in the first year. And that is in large part due to that purchasing power, those group discount rates, and their ability to then cap exposure at certain rates. With the estimated savings, with the enhancements to the employee experience, we are very happy to recommend today to, the transition to IPBC. And if deemed appropriate, we are looking to adopt IPBC through ordinance this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Does anybody have any questions for Director Campbell?
Head.
Would this go into effect for a January first enrollment period, or what is the timing of that?
Yes, it would be effective January one. We are looking to bring back financial, final financial information to city council in October, and open enrollment would run October through November with a start date of January one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Others?
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions. So this is exclusive of our public safety workers, correct? They function under separate contracts, separate health benefit programs?
We have a great relationship with our collectively bargained groups. They adopt our current city health insurance benefits. Now, we do include them in our benefits committee, and so they go through the entire process with us. There are representatives from our collective bargaining agreements in the benefits committee, and they will transition with this new model as of January one as well.
And then out of curiosity, so we did an employee survey. What percentage of our employees responded? Is it a small group, or were we looking at a return rate of fifty, sixty percent on?
I'm so glad you asked. I'm very proud to say that we've done a lot of work with engaging in our employees and helping them understand that their feedback informs the process. We had over a seventy-five percent response rate from staff, and we also asked them to survey their families as well, and we received an outstanding number of feedback from our spouses as well.
Great job.
Standing. Other questions, comments? Very good. Jason?
Great. Thanks, Amber, and again, thanks to all of the staff who've been involved in this process to date. Really pleased with the outcome. And with that, that concludes my report for this evening.
All right. The next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Is there anyone who would like to address the council at this time? Please come on up. If you desire, state your name and address.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to share my gratitude to Public Works, especially the city and especially sewer and water and garbage. So we had a leak in our neighborhood, and sewer and water were amazing. They found it due to the technology you all approved, and they quickly fixed it, notified us when the water was going to be shut off and turned back on, and they were super professional. The same with garbage. They've always been amazing. They've helped a few times, and I've seen, and we won't say who also, who also did this, but I've seen people stop them, and they will take the garbage that people forgot to put out or whatever. So just a nice thing, and thank you for making sure we had the tools to do that. Great, great two groups. So that's it.
Thank you for your feedback. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Yes, please come on up, and if desired, state your name and address.
Good evening. Ishwar Lakshmi Narayan with the Lake Forest Library, three sixty East Deer Path, and I'm here to get you to read. So what you have at your desk is the, the latest book that, this is a big community read, and it's, it's called Lake Forest Reads. It's a collaboration with many, many entities in the community, with Lake Forest College, Dickinson Hall, Gorton Center. We get, we get several copies of this book, which we distribute, and, you know, folks read it. And starting, you know, early October, there'll be numerous book discussions throughout the community. So encourage you to read this. This is a fascinating book about, you know, a woman who works in an aquarium and makes friends with a giant Pacific octopus. And I won't say anything more because it's really, really, really heartwarming. So yes, and we are actually going to be welcoming the author, Shelby Van Pelt, to Lake Forest on Friday, November one, at Gorton at seven P. M. Details are in your packet, and also a workshop the following day at Delightery. So please do plan to come. Invitation to all residents. In addition to just the book discussions, we're also doing a variety of programming. And one of the programs really caught my eye, and I don't know who gave this this title. Nine brains are better than one. So I think it has some reference to the size of some of our boards and commissions in town. So I'll leave you with that. I hope to see you all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to the next item, which is committee reports. We will have a report from Parks and Recreation Board. There's a request for approval of a recommendation from Parks and Recreation Board for the Northcroft Park Master Plan. This will be presented by Chuck Meyer, Superintendent of Parks and Forestry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Tac and members of the council. I'm here to present the Northcroft Master Plan. So back in two thousand and nineteen, there was a strategic master plan, a comprehensive plan for parks that was put together. In that plan, they identified Northcroft as a park that needed some improvements. They identified improvements but also additions that they, they thought would be helpful in the park, that would, people would enjoy. They also pointed out the disconnect within the park. The path system isn't connected to a lot of the amenities. They said it was somewhat disjointed. We've also changed the use of the park over the years. We stopped using the ice rink out there and also a baseball diamond, and we never really reused those areas. No grading was done on the ice rink, so there's not a lot that people can do there. So all of those changes that took place led us to a park that just needs some attention. So ultimately, that, the comprehensive plan recommended that we do a full master plan for the park. This is similar to what we did back in two thousand and sixteen. We came to city council for the South Park Master Plan, received approval on that. And from there, we set up, we, we used that to put our CIP together for planning in the future. But importantly, we also used it for grants. And we received an OzLod grant, which master plans like this are critical for that kind of a program. So with that, city staff put together a team to work on this back in two thousand and twenty-three. It involved members of city staff, also two members of the Park and Recreation Board, and we hired Hitchcock Design Group to help guide us, but also to actually put the plan together. So in twenty-three, or in the spring of twenty-three, we started gathering data. And we had a couple of public meetings throughout this whole process, but one was in the spring. So it was called Planning and Pizza in the Park. And at that time, we had a great turnout. I'll talk about that in a minute. But then we followed that with an online survey, and from that, we received a lot of really valuable input. And it was great to see the numbers of people that were interested. A lot of people love this park, and they were really interested in making improvements. So some of the, the feedback that we received included parking lot improvements, the drive in, the circulation there, people thought that could be better, the walking path improvements, including the woodland path, and also just a general sense that we needed better accessibility to amenities, but also to the park itself. And then a number of people expressed a desire for us to move the playground. It's on the other side of the parking lot from the pavilion and the restrooms, and there was concern that kids were crossing through all the time. So that was, that, we heard that quite a bit. We also heard many people that wanted to make sure we preserve trees, that we added trees. And overall, there were a lot of different amenities suggested, from pickleball to sledding hills, things like that. But eighty-four percent of the respondents said that they do think that we need to, need to make some improvements to the park. So with that, we moved into the summer of twenty-three. We, we started the design of the, the schematic design. We put together a couple options based on the input from our team, but also importantly, the community. So we put that together and then offered two options, which I'll jump to in a moment. And then from there, in, in fall, we went back to the community with these two options and asked them what they thought again. So we had another event called Smores and More, also well-attended, and we followed that with an online survey that people could give comments on the two options. And then in, in twenty, starting early in twenty-four, we finalized the plan, brought it to the Park and Rec Board. They did approve it. They recommended approval by city council, and that's why I'm here tonight. So I mentioned the community engagements. This, these are the cards that went out. We, Dana and her staff did an excellent job with this whole project throughout the whole year. They really wanted to make sure we did this right. So we, we came up with a plan. You can see some of the, the photos here. The kids are important, too. We thought, why would, you know, what better way to get input than to ask our young users of the park? So at both events, we had activities for kids, but we also asked them to tell us what they liked about the park or what they would want. So we have a good cross-section of responses from adults, park users, and from a lot of our young users. So the community engagement, as I mentioned, it was well-attended. The, the first one, the planning and pizza, we had over a hundred attendees. The first online survey that we did, we had four hundred and forty responses, which I thought was an excellent response rate. And then in the fall, when we did the Smores and More, we had over seventy-five attendees. And then the second survey resulted in a hundred and seventy-six responses. So the two schematic designs that I mentioned, Concept A and B, they have some similarities. But we, we brought these to the community, the second community engagement. We also put this online so people could view it. Just some of the high-level things, you can see that the parking lot's a little bit different in, in both of them. One's larger. They're both relatively close to where the parking is now. You can see the playground in, in the orange was reversed on these. So on your, on the left, you can see that it was on the west side of the park next to the splash pad. On the other one, we put it on the east side of the park, which allowed us to put a sled hill in here. The other things, you notice, the size of the athletic field changed a little bit. A lot of the path system was very similar. We knew that everyone, everyone wanted more accessibility, so that was pretty much similar on both plans. So with that, this was the, the plan that was developed. After we received the input, we went back, and I would say that this is actually a hybrid of Option A and B. This is the playground from Option B, or not playground, the parking lot from Option B. It also represents the playground from Option A. So we put those two together, and we changed some things totally, like the pickleball courts. You can see them shown here. That was not the plan on either of the options. We wanted to move those away from residents as much as possible, and we heard that from some of the neighbors. So we, we listened closely to what people were saying, and we adapted. So this is the master plan. I have split it into two halves. So I'm going to go through it quickly to show you the north portion of the park, starting with the top, the connection to the residential area. Right now, that's just a grass, but pretty much just a dirt path, and it, it goes to a curb. So we want to make some improvements. It goes to Old Elm Road, and then it would cross over. So we want to have a safe passage for residents. We thought that was important. And then moving over to the east, the connection to McClory, similar kind of thing there. It is asphalt right now. However, we think that there's a better way to do it. And the McClory bike path, as you know, is heavily used, and we know that people use the park to access it. So we want to make that better. It is going to be challenging because of the railroad tracks right there, but we think that we can do that better. So moving down a little bit, you see the full-size soccer field. The soccer fields, that would, or that field would include improvements with grading, with... with probably drainage. This park, again, is one of them that doesn't drain well, so we'd look at drainage while we're doing it. And possibly irrigation, but that remains to be seen. We also may have to modify the path. The path that, as you know, the path here is existing, we may have to reconfigure that a little bit, just to accommodate the the full-size soccer fields. And then as you move a little bit south, you see the shade structure. This path through the middle obviously does not exist today. That gives us the opportunity to put a shade structure and a gathering area, but also a tree-lined path so people can get a little shade. And then I'll go a little south to the playground. As I mentioned, we heard a lot from people that wanted the playground on this side of the parking lot. That that's where it landed. So the playground is multi-level. In the middle there is showing a change in the grade. So people definitely love our playground there. Many people commented about the playground, how important it is, and it is a huge draw to the park. So people want at least what we have there and then some. So it it's a good-sized playground, and it has some interesting features. Obviously, we have not designed it yet, but we want to make it special when we do. As a side note, our playground that's out there now is seventeen years old. Typically, useful life for a playground is twenty years. So we did add a splash pad just adjacent to the playground. And here's the bathroom. So we thought that was a nice fit, to have the bathrooms right next to splash pad and the playground. And then on the pavilion itself, this is one of the most pavilions in the city. It's a very high rental rate. Our building maintenance guys put warming walls on it in the winter, so it's year-year-round use. We thought that some people had brought up to us that they really liked it, and they want to use it in the winter. So we're looking at different ways to accommodate that without having our building maintenance department have to spend a week putting these walls on. We're looking at overhead garage doors, the clear ones, like you see at a lot of restaurants these days, so that there is no installation every year. So otherwise, the pavilion would have other improvements. It is a bit outdated, so the bathrooms, the floor, all need some help. So finally, on the pavilion, we added a terrace with a fireplace, just something that we thought would be a nice add-on to the park. So moving south then, to the southern half of the park, I'll start with the parking lot. It is expanded. Currently, we have fifty-eight spots. We would be moving to a hundred and seven with this plan. The other option I showed you brought it up even further than that. I think it was closer to two hundred or a hundred and eighty. So we thought that this was a nice balance. In addition, you can see a roundabout at the end to help with some of the issues with, right now, people don't have a way to turn around if the parking lot is full. It's very difficult and tight. So a roundabout with lined with sidewalks for safe passage for pedestrians. You can see a lot of these sidewalks that connect in the paths. That was a major theme of this plan. So moving a little bit south, the the court areas. We've confined confined all of the courts to a specific area. So the tennis courts, we have two out there now. They are currently over here, but we moved them because the pickle, we we felt that the pickleball should be a little bit further away from residential, just because of any noise concerns. So we put six pickleball here. And in the middle, we put a gathering spot, similar to what we have at Deer Path Pickleball Courts. So a gathering spot with a little bit of shade. And then finally, a handball court. A handball, handball was mentioned in the survey. People did respond that they wanted that. We currently don't have any handballs in the city's parks. This would be the first. The college of, the Lake Forest College does have a handball program. With this one, we were approached by someone that would like to donate all the funds to build it. We're currently looking, we're doing the design and looking at the costs. So you may be hearing from me on that one again soon. So that would be up in this area. So then, as we move a little bit south, U-ten soccer field. This path would be new. This is asphalt path to connect the amenities and a shade structure in the corner there. And then you you notice a different color of the path, this kind of tan color. That's the woodland trail. There are trails out there now. It's not configured this way, but there are some trails out there. These would be improvements to the trails. Also, a spur that goes down to the Grove campus. We thought it would be good, more inviting trail. The Senior Center and others down there could come up to the park. With this trail, we also put seating areas, areas of that could be quiet reflection places. We thought that was important to put some areas like that in the park. So the the final thing I'll mention is the disc golf. Disc golf is shown in this area in the woods. The woods are full of buckthorn right now, and a lot of what we're talking about with the trail would require buckthorn removal. But the many, a a large portion of the woods are very high-quality woods. So once we do some of that work, we'd like to put in the city's first disc golf course. So this just is representative of the area. It could also border on some of the areas in the park. So again, that would be a first for Lake Forest. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a comment. It's quite a comprehensive park, the way you've presented it. It's really a pretty impressive thing. And I think that particularly considering comments that I've received over the years from the west side of the city, I think it's quite an addition. So I'm pretty impressed by that. Are there other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Louie Weber?
Thank you, Mary Tack. Hi, thank you so much, Chuck. It's great to see this presentation, and I know we saw a snippet at our last civic beautification meeting. If if we're able to bring up the slide with the top half of the park, I had just one opportunity of improvement. And generally, when you have little kids, the first thing that happens when you're there is they have to go to the bathroom. So I noticed that the pathway is further north towards the soccer field, and you have to walk around. But there is the terrace there, and I would just encourage to have some sort of shorter path to the bathrooms. And that would, I think, help out all those moms with little kids.
Absolutely. I I agree. I, we have heard that from a couple of people. Because it's so close here, we thought that would be easy to accommodate. So absolutely.
I, thank you very much. I think the plan looks great. It's very exciting. Will there be in the tennis area on the lower half? Are you going to have water fountains or bottle fillers or something between the courts?
Yes, we we can. And a master plan doesn't get into that kind of detail, but yeah, I get your point. I appreciate it. That hasn't been talked about, but we are already hearing that at Deer Path. So yeah, it's it's good to think about it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there'd be water services.
Yeah, there is currently a drinking fountain right next to the there, so it would be very likely. And a bottle filler is what we're doing these days.
Yeah. And then my second question, any idea on the timeline?
Yeah, and and I I think it's important to recognize that this is a first step, that we use this for planning. As I alluded to, the playground is three years from replacement. We obviously couldn't put in some of this stuff without moving the playground. So once these things start falling into place, it proceeds from there. So when we replace the the playground, that makes room for that. It it's all connected. So that's my long way of saying it's probably in the three to ten years. We don't plan on just doing this whole park. We had a lot of concern from residents that they they didn't want to just bulldoze. I think they had Deer Path in their mind, and they they didn't like the idea of just starting over. And we said, no, that's not how we typically do it. Much like South Park, as you know, we did it as grant funds became available. That gave us a burst of projects. But then the the tail end of that can linger on a little bit. So we hope three to, I'd like to say eight years, ten years, something like that.
Very good. Other questions? Alderman Powers?
Chuck, thanks for the presentation. And I'm I'm always amazed when I go to some of these parks I haven't been to in years with, as my kids are older, just the amount of space and how fabulous they are. So repurposing these, I think, is awesome. My one question is, as we talk about all-around use, particularly with the rental of the pavilion, is there a snow removal plan for these paths for people to walk? I get it, it's not a top priority with streets and city taking priority. But is there, has that been focused on, or is that already incorporated?
It it isn't yet, but we deal with that with every park. We're talking about, I mean, Forest Park, started with that, but we talk about it at Deer Path. It depends on the use, I guess. We haven't specifically talked to people on the snow program about it. We do have, like Town Line, we do plow that path. This is one that I think is likely. Maybe we wouldn't do every path. I would suspect that, you know, it may be that we try to create a full walking loop and maybe some of the interior. Obviously, when you have to plow, you have the the challenge of not damaging the turf, and you can't salt. So it is something that we look seriously at.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Alderman notes?
Chuck, with the anticipated connection point to Grove, is there a trail system on that campus right now? Or is this a, they would need to do something down the road to connect?
They, well, they, there's not a formal path system that I know of. From my knowledge, there are sidewalks and ways to get through there, but there isn't a path system there. So no, it does end up coming in to a grassy field near Sterling there. That's where the path currently does. So no, there isn't a path, but it does take you right to the campus where you can walk across the lawn. I suspect that at some point, someone will maybe want a clear path there.
Very good. Anything else? Is there anyone in the public that would like to make comment on this? Okay.
One final plug, if I may. This next week, we are jumping into Waveland. You may have received this already, but we have something called Slices and Spaces, the creativity. You can thank Dana. You've noticed the pizza, the food, it is a good draw. But we 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 have this coming up next week where we're inviting residents to come and give us their ideas on the Waveland Pavilion. So look forward to that, and hopefully, we'll see a lot of public there, and if you can make it as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board for the Northcroft Park Master Plan.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman LeBert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote, consideration of which there are seven. I will read all of the items. If any of the aldermen would like to have something removed or taken separately, please let me know upon completion of the reading. Item one, approval of the September third, twenty twenty-four city council meeting minutes. Item two, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding a raffle in the city of Lake Forest for Northwestern Medicine Lake Forest Hospital. Approval by motion. Item three, consideration of an ordinance authorizing city membership in the Intergovernmental Personnel Personnel Benefit Cooperative, IPBC, effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Item four, approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee of an award of bid for a three-year fire alarm testing and inspection services contract to TEC Electric in the amount of fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Item five, approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Kemper Sports Management Agreement, and as a result, approval of a standalone agreement for the Forest Park Beach Concessions Management. Item six, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board for three seventy South Ridge Road, eight ninety West Deer Path, one nine six five Windridge Drive, and twenty-four Washington Circle. First reading, and if desired by the council, final approval. And finally, item seven, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals for one thirty Niles Avenue and three ninety North Green Bay Road. First reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Are there any items you would like to have removed or taken separately? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the seven omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second?
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman LeBert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Excellent. The next item is old business, of which there is none this evening. The next item is new business. At this time, we'll be considering a recommendation from staff to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with Cordogan, Clark, and Associates in the amount of one million, five hundred and six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars with a three-point-five percent contingency for a total of one million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for design, construction drawings, and cost estimating services to support the adaptive reuse of the nineteen twenty-five Field Court Office building for the city's future police station. This item will be presented by Jim Lockifer, Assistant Director of Public Works, and Kevin Zelk, Deputy Chief of Police.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, and members of our community. We're very happy to be here before you again to discuss the next phase of the future police station project. Before we get into the details, I think it's important to have a quick review of what we've accomplished so far, where we are today, and what's potentially next for this project. In April, we began a due diligence period to study the need for a new station and to determine the viability of the nineteen twenty-five Field Court site for an adaptive reuse police headquarters. In July, staff presented those findings, and the council took action approving the purchase of the property at nineteen twenty-five Field Court. After approving that purchase, staff undertook a request for proposal process for selecting a professional architecture and design firm to provide design, construction drawings, and cost estimating services. Tonight, we will discuss the results of this RFP process, upcoming goals, and request the city council's approval for the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with a design firm. Following tonight, there will be a months-long process to deliver a high-quality product to the city council and to the community. Before I do go on, I do want to thank Dana Olson and her team for constantly providing updated information about this product, project on the city department's website. If you haven't done already, I would strongly encourage anybody to go to the police department's website so you can find all the up-to-date and up-to-the-minute timely information. So thank you, Dana, to you and your team. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Jim Lockifer, who will go into a little bit more detail and explanation of the RFP process. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As Kevin outlined in the background information, we are now at that point where we have conducted that request for proposal, RFP process, where city staff initiated that that RFP seeking those professional services, as Kevin outlined, for comprehensive design services for the adaptive reuse of a new police station at that nineteen twenty-five Field Court building. Before I get into the information presented on the slide, what's highlighted there is more of the outcome of that RFP process. Just wanted to take a brief step back to talk about the process, to to get these results that you see on the screen here. In late July, following that second city council meeting in July where city council approved the purchase of that nineteen twenty-five Field Court building, staff about a week later initiated a detailed request for proposal package that was publicly available online for any interested firm or or person to download. We had that available online for a We had that available online for a three-week period, and during that period, we saw 31 firms download that request for proposal package. As the deadline came and went, we had eight firms actually respond and submit their submittals with all the information we requested, which certainly included the proposal amount that you see on the right-hand side of the chart, but also their past project experience and references, their project team that they would propose to work on, on the city's project, each individual person, their, their project approach, how, how would they take us through design from start to finish to get us to construction? And then, of course, again, that, that proposal amount. And I will say, just, just for reference, this was an extremely competitive process in our world and in Public Works, where we oftentimes see for other engineering design services in terms of plan holders, when they download the RFP, anywhere from 10 to 15, we like to see, and that usually results in about three to firms actually submitting. So, the fact that we had 31 and wound up with eight submittals was, was great. It, it was outstanding. Real quick comment on cost. As you can see on the screen there, we had a fairly tight range, and our RFP staff review team, and I'll talk about that more in detail here soon, we, we were very pleased to see how those numbers came in. We had a preliminary design estimate range that we were working with of 1.6 to about 1.85 million. And again, as you can see, we received numerous proposals below or right in line with that amount. And that, that amount relates to the overall construction budget that City Council previously heard via the FGM needs analysis, where that ranged from the 24.5 to 28.8 million, but that did include this design, these design services as well. Quickly, but one last comment I wanted to make, just in terms of overall process, receiving these eight submittals with all that information that the firm submitted required a great detailed review by what we call and what we often reference as an internal staff RFP team. There were number, there are members of that staff team with, with representation from the police department, community development, Public Works, and at an individual level, every team member reviewed all eight of those proposals in detail. We then came together as a group and decided which firms we wanted to bring back in for a detailed interview, kind of a one-on-one with our staff team. And that, those, we, we wound up, we were very aligned, which was, which was nice, in recommending to bring in Kluber Architects, FGM Architects, and Corden &amp; Clark back in for an interview, where we actually got to meet their staff teams and who would be working on this project. After interviews, we, we then again met as a team and had some serious discussions on who we wanted to recommend as that staff recommended firm, and we had a unanimous selection, which again, in terms of being, working through a process like this, that's always very nice to see, and that firm was Corden &amp; Clark. For numerous reasons, a couple here highlighted on the slide, and those first two points are all about the firm itself, their experience working on large municipal projects to include police stations. And just, just quickly, Corden &amp; Clark, they're a very substantially large firm, lot of resources under their roof specifically, they employ over 150 employees, they have seven offices located in the Midwest here, two, the nearest two, Chicago and Aurora. Again, lots of resources. And then their experience specifically with constructing police stations. They've done the police station for Aurora, Peru, Elburn, all new construction processes that resulted in great final products. And then, one specifically that we spent a lot of time discussing in the interview process, the city of Yorkville's new police station. That was done a few years ago, and that was truly an adaptive reuse process, very similar to what we're about to undertake. They, the city of Yorkville purchased an old commercial office building, and they went through a process trying to reuse as much of that existing space as possible for a final new police station. I actually was, was fortunate where I was able to connect with the city manager of Yorkville, who spoke incredibly highly of Corden &amp; Clark, that project, that entire process. It was very encouraging to hear. The next two points were, were points that the staff RFP team really felt elevated Corden &amp; Clark and differentiated them from some other firms with some of their approach and what they brought to their team. And that included their long-term planning and creative design approach with a very special focus on meeting budget targets. That last point, meeting budget targets. Their approach, they spent a lot of time talking about a progressive design with that design budget constantly in mind and being that, that key decision-making factor. It was comment, these were comments that really resonated with the staff team, knowing that this is going to be a, a capital project, millions of dollars, managing that budget is going to be extremely important. And one specific comment a team member made, again, referencing that progressive approach, is limiting surprises. The last thing that Corden &amp; Clark conveyed to us for any client that they want to do is go through an entire design process, issue the documents for construction bids, and wind up with construction pricing well over that budget, and then the client is in a corner scrambling to cut things from the budget. They don't like to do that, they don't want any surprises, and they actually brought with them, as part of the interview, some data highlighting, I believe it was 30-plus projects where they met their budget or under budget, they were very proud to share that with us. They also have brought to the table, while Corden &amp; Clark, their team's going to be leading the project, they're collaborating with another architectural firm, McLaren Wilson &amp; Laurie, or MWL. And that is a firm that has specific expertise with public safety facilities as well as the forensic sciences. They've done over 450 public safety projects across 46 states. Their resume was incredibly impressive. MWL and Corden &amp; Clark had paired up on those previous public safety projects I had referenced with, with great outcomes. So, that was another factor that was very important to the staff RFP team. And then, lastly, but certainly as important as everything else I mentioned, if not most important, their mid-range cost estimate. Just quickly flipping back to the chart here, you can see their $1.5 million proposals right, right in the middle, and the staff RFP team with Corden &amp; Clark, we reviewed their numbers very closely. Our staff team felt very, very strongly that everything included their proposal at that price was, was fair for what they were, were including. We had comfort with that. And so, we are seeking City Council's approval and authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with Corden &amp; Clark at that dollar amount listed on the slide, but before we open up to any questions, I know the city manager wish I had a few comments.
Great. Thank you, Jim. And I just wanted to make sure I would share with both the council and the community that consistent with processes that have been very successful for us in the past, if council is to approve tonight moving forward with comprehensive design services for this new police facility, we would convene a city manager advisory group made up of citizen volunteers throughout the community. In this case, a group of individuals with a balanced knowledge of both city finances, I think, police operations, and importantly, architectural, engineering, and construction services, including adaptive reuse. And so, the group that you see on the right there are all tentatively committed to participate. We may be looking at adding one or maybe two members in the coming weeks, but again, this group, similar to what we've done in the past, would really be charged with providing advice, challenging assumptions, making recommendations both to the staff team and to the project consultants, really serving as a sounding board and providing opportunities to give meaningful feedback. And so, really grateful for those who have already offered to help participate. We have in the audience here tonight our former First Ward Alderman and Chair of the Finance Committee, Jed Morris, who has offered to, to chair the group. Really thrilled to have him on board. And then, in addition to the citizen advisory group, we have an internal project team that will be working on this, really like a lot of the other projects we've had, including most recently Deer Path Park. This will be an interdisciplinary effort. Will be led by the, our Chief of Police, will also include our two deputy chiefs, our Assistant Public Works Director, our Assistant City Manager, our Community Development Director, our Finance Director, and our Director of Communications and Community Engagement. This will be a core project team. Certainly, there may be, you know, offshoots and subcommittees as the project progresses. It'll be important for us to want to allow for other members of the police department to weigh in and provide input on aspects of the project that are going to be near and dear to them, whether it be things like locker rooms or training and workout facilities. They're the ones who are going to be using this day in and day out, will want their involvement as the project continues to progress. I would think a lot of members of Kathy's team, sort of our trades inspectors, will likely be involved as well. So, we'll have a lot of individuals involved at various levels. And again, I'll only reiterate that, that this is a, a framework that has been very successful for us in the past, so looking forward to everyone's participation in this. And as Kevin, I think, said on that first slide, when we look at the timeline, if the council is to approve this tonight, we would expect probably an eight-to-10-month, at least, process to, before we come back to the council with final design and ultimate construction bids. So, with that, I'll turn it back to Jim to review what's in front of you tonight and let him or other members of staff answer any questions you have.
And so, with that, again, the, the action requested on the screen there and as identified in the agenda, we're seeking, city staff is seeking, City Council to authorize the city manager to enter into that professional services contract with Corden &amp; Clark at the, the dollar amounts listed on the screen. Happy to take any questions?
Questions for Director Lockifer or Deputy Chief Zelk?
I have some questions. And actually, these aren't questions, these are comments. And first, I want to thank you, Jimmy, for what you've done, what you've brought forward to us. And that was my initial question, was what were the data points that you were going over with Corden &amp; Clark? And I think you articulated those very well. What particularly jumped out at me is, you know, itemizing some of those communities like the city of Aurora, Peru, and Elburn, little apples and oranges there. We're talking about two really small communities and one rather large one, which is a hometown, but the adaptive reuse in Yorkville, which is a community of 23,000, and it sounds very similar to, you know, our town, and, and adaptive reuse is really appealing. What really grabs me about the, the approach of this firm is the project, you know, approaching it as a major data point is project design costs. I think that was one of the things that I was very concerned about in the beginning, and I think we all were. One of the problems with military-industrial complex, they say, build us an aircraft carrier and give us the bill later. And we're doing it the other way around. We're, we have some defined parameters as to what we want, and I feel infinitely confident, especially if, if former Alderman Jed Morris is, is there. Having had the pleasure of serving with Jed for five years, I know there's a man with a very sharp pencil over there who's going to work with our staff as well as, as the design firm. And the fact that they're able to collaborate with MWL for that comprehensive design service, I think is really, it's, we're leveraging a lot here and getting a lot of bang for our buck. And I think the success of almost any major capital project is determined in the very beginning, and I'm thrilled with the start that you and DC Zelk, everybody's doing now. So, I, I just have to give you my whole heart endorsement and say thank you. We've sat in Public Works Committee meetings before, and boy, you've really put in a lot of work on this. So, thank you for the hard work that you've done and the entire team to date, so.
Are there other comments or questions?
Hi, thanks so much for the presentation. So, it sounds very impressive, the selection that you made based on the RFP. But my question is, because they're the fourth most expensive choice, and, and I, I understand what you called out tonight to showcase why you chose them, but I guess I'd like a little better understanding about the three that were less expensive that responded to the same RFP specs. Can you just go a little bit further on those?
Sure, absolutely. And right off the bat, and, and I want to be careful because all firms take a lot of time to participate in this process, and it takes a lot of time and effort, we sincerely appreciated all the responses. Truly, all eight, to some degree, are, have done project work like this and are qualified. What I'll say for the, the first three firms was more so, more than anything, about fit and that project approach. And for me, and I know the, the RFP team specifically, when we're meeting the people who are actually going to be the ones working on this project, and we're hearing about their approach, I think there was consensus among us that we felt fairly strongly, again, going back to Corden &amp; Clark's target-based budgeting, that working with them now could save some serious, that, that front-end process that Alderman Gashgarian just referenced, their approach to us really resonated to say, this is the right process to do it, progressive that will help us in the long run hit that budget, when you're talking a range of, again, 23 million, 24 million to 28 million, that's where, where it resonated closely with us. Again, Kluber Architects, FGM, yes, project experience, but when we talk about overall fit and what we felt was truly where we arrive at the best outcome, it, it resonated with the project team specifically, the people that they're going to have working on it, their approach to cost estimating and hitting that, that target, those were differentiating factors, because we did have lots of serious discussions looking at some of those less costly firms, but we still arrived with Corden &amp; Clark being that, that recommended firm.
Okay, thank you.
And just to sort of amplify that a little bit, I think when you look at the price differential between the final three that you considered in the context of the overall project, I think having that comfort level with the principles that you met, that presented to you is, is, is really important. And the cost differential, you know, monetarily is rather insignificant in consideration of that, my own viewpoint, having heard the feedback from, from the, the group that was going over the RFP.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there, okay. Alderman Weber?
Thank you, Mayor Tag. And Jim, thank you so much. And Deputy Chief Zelk, I just wanted to share my excitement about this project and say I'm very confident in the direction that this is going, and especially spending our tax dollars fiscally responsible. So, thank you for keeping that utmost in your selection process.
Thank you.
Excellent. Others? Alderman Powers?
I know this is probably already in the works, but I've mentioned it before, so I want to mention it again. I think it's incredibly important that from a communication perspective and knowing our Director of Communications, Dana Olson, as I'm starting to learn her work product, for us to continue to discover new ways to communicate to the community. Because again, the websites are awesome, but I think it's really important that we try to let people know as, as these committees unfold and we learn more things, that we're making sure that they're, you know, informed on a regular basis so that we can, we can get as much input as possible. And then, the last thing I'll say, which I know is not part of this, but we still have a public services building that needs some time and attention too, at an important point in time, and I want to make sure that that doesn't get lost as we move forward.
And that's a great point. You bring up Alderman Powers. I should have noted this, that we have received concurrent with this process, a proposal for preliminary space needs analysis and design work for the public safety building, similar to what we did with the 1925 building. And that proposal falls within my spending authority. There are still sufficient funds available for what you, the City Council, approved last spring for space needs analysis associated with 1925. So, we will move forward with that. So, as, as we get into winter and into early spring, you guys will be able to have informed conversations about the 1925 building with a confident level of understanding as to what the needs may be to retrofit the current public safety building for exclusive fire department use.
Thank you. Excellent. Alderman Notes?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also just like to weigh in that the selection of your advisory group, both from the resident side as well as the staff side, knowing everybody you put up there, you couldn't have have asked for a better group to assemble that really understands and appreciates and the demands for coming up with a prudent design that addresses the needs, learning the lessons from what's been done well and not well in the past, and delivering the project that meets our department's needs and the city's needs and the finances' needs and our resident needs. So I commend you for that and look forward to the work product.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask for public comment, if any. Is there anyone who would like to address the council on this matter? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you very much. At this time, we will be considering a recommendation from staff to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with Corden and Clark and Associates in the amount of one million, five hundred and six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars with a three-point-five percent contingency for a total of one million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for design, construction drawings, and cost estimating services to support the adaptive reuse of the nineteen twenty-five field court office building for the city's future police station. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
This would be a roll call vote.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Very good. Excellent. The next item is consideration of providing direction to city staff to draft a zoning code amendment for consideration by the plan commission relating to the telecommunications wireless overlay district. This will be presented by Director of Community Development Catherine Cerniak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Wireless service and the adequacy or lack thereof has been a topic that I've heard from many of you on, and I know many of you have heard from business owners and residents on that topic as well. So just a little background. In nineteen ninety-eight, the city council first adopted a wireless overlay district, which is part of the zoning code and which identified locations within our community for both telecommuni- communication towers and for antennas. That portion of the zoning code was last updated in twenty-ten. We have a number of towers, we have a number of antennas, but as both the frequency of use has expanded, as, as well as just the, the number of, sheer number of devices, that service isn't adequate. And we've, we've known that for quite a while, but we also know that many of the telecommunication companies can get a bigger bang for their buck by building out their systems and updating their systems elsewhere, especially on the east side or even on our low-density residential west side. If you draw a circle on the east side, part of that is out in the lake. We have fairly low density. Many of our, our properties are an acre in size. So the companies aren't real excited about coming into our community. We, we continue to have discussions with both tower building companies as well as the service providers themselves. And those discussions have recently become more positive, more productive. And one thing that we can do, one thing that the city council can do, is set the stage for, if we can get some of these companies interested, making it easier and more streamlined for them to come in. So as I noted, the overlay district is part of the zoning code. The zoning code is under the purview of the plan commission, who makes recommendations to the city council for any changes. That overlay district identifies permitted areas, and in some cases, depending on the location, establishes conditions and limitations with respect to height, size, screening type. This is very difficult to read. I know you have it on your screen, but this is our existing pattern of towers and antennas throughout the community. And if you notice, in primarily the fourth ward, there is a hole. We have a tower at Woodlands, we have towers at Lake Forest Academy and on the hospital campus, we have antennas on the high school campus, we have antennas on the city's water tower. But again, the, the comments I receive most frequently, and I know some of you hear from businesses in the Wahegan Road Business District, Southern Square Business District, and some residents out in that area, including Alderman Weber. We've heard from you directly.
I get a lot, I get a lot of text messages and calls and emails.
So we, the city owns considerable property. The parking lot on either side, both to the north and south of the train station, this is Wahegan Road, Conway Road, Telegraph, or, I'm sorry, Telegraph Road and Everett Road. So the conversations we have had are about the potential of locating a new tower, recognizing that, that we would all prefer not to have a new tower, but the opportunity for the city to lease a portion of our parking lot. We do have some taller buildings, the C B I C Bank Building, used to be private bank, and Fifth Third, which is right on the corner of Telegraph and Everett Road. So we have, have some discussions about locating a tower in this area. A number of years ago, the city council did approve, actually later than twenty-ten, approve an amendment that allowed distributed, distributed antenna systems to be located on light poles and utility poles. And the guy, the thought was that we would see a lot of those smaller antennas be located up and down Wahegan Road, but the service providers never, never came through with that. And it was simply not wanting to build out their system in that way. So we're before you tonight, not to ask for your approval of, of anything specific, but for your direction on whether or not you want the plan commission to be proactive and look at a zoning code amendment, which would identify a permitted area in the Wahegan Road Southern Square Business District for a new tower, and perhaps put some parameters around what, what type of tower, what the height could be, how the ground equipment might need to be screened. If you choose to give us that direction tonight, the process would essentially be that we would draft an amendment, we would draft language, based on what we know so far, based on discussions to date, we would prepare a map, we would do appropriate notice, the required legal notice for a plan commission meeting. In fact, we're prepared to submit a legal notice for publication for the October ninth, I believe, plan commission meeting. We're prepared to submit that for publication tomorrow, if you direct us to do so. We would also send direct mail notice, as required for any code amendment. The plan commission would hold a public hearing, they would deliberate, direct changes, and then ultimately make a recommendation to the city council. You would give that final approval. While that's going on, we would continue discussions with a couple tower building companies that seem very interested. And those tower building companies have already talked with a number of providers, including Verizon, A T and T, and T-Mobile. So we are just looking for direction tonight on whether you would like us to move this forward to the plan commission. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. My first comment is that, you know, I experienced this all the time going to and from work back when I actually used to work, and that you would drive down Wahegan and all of a sudden, you know, you were, you know, like in the middle of nowhere. And I know that it was a problem for public safety and the EMS services, that they would lose contact in certain zones in the city. So it's more than, you know, fixing this problem is more than just, you know, sort of solving an inconvenience to some people. I think it's really, you know, we're so dependent on this that having adequate coverage is really critical. And it turns out that, you know, it's really about the towers and the antennas and, and getting the cell companies to agree to utilize those things. So anyway, that's just my comment. Does anyone else have comments or questions for, for Kathy regarding this? Everybody. Well, let's start at the end here. Alderman Novit?
What, I think it's a great idea, honestly, because as, as Mayor Tac just said, there's nothing worse than a dead spot. But my, I'm curious about what the limits are now, how, I know there's a tower by me, I see it, I just don't know how it would, how it would fit or what kind of parameters would be put on it as we consider adding one. Would it really be that bad?
The, the parameters, whether or not there should be parameters and what those would be, would be discussed by the plan commission. Right now, we have towers at a variety of heights, eighty feet to probably about a hundred and forty feet. And those have always, you know, we, the plan commission and city council work to identify locations that would be least intrusive while also balancing the need to have appropriate coverage. So what you would be doing is asking the plan commission to look at location, to look at tower types, and there are different types of towers. Most of our towers are, are twenty years old or, or long, or older. There are different types of towers that perhaps can be less intrusive. Towers are towers, but tonight, we're not asking you to make those decisions, and I can't stand here and tell you what those parameters might be. The plan commission would discuss that and ultimately forward a recommendation to you.
Okay. Next. Anyone else? Okay. Alderman Weber?
Thank you. I think Mayor Tac, just reiterating what he said, the safety component, I had to get a landline because I was concerned that if there was an emergency, that we would either not get through or have a drop call, from personal experience.
On the notes?
Well, first of all, I emphatically support this. What I want to clarify is, is the scope of what you're asking our approval on focusing solely on the southwest part of Lake Forest? Because as you noted, uptown is on, I, I was shocked to see as many towers uptown as you said, because the service uptown is awful. And I, I would love to piggyback on the opportunity to find all those other areas that, in the city, that could benefit from this same effort.
The overlay district actually identifies many more areas than there are towers. So that exercise was done. We could certainly take another look at it. I would suggest that this site is the one where there seems to be some traction on, so to not delay moving forward on this. And there's another piece that some of the existing towers and antennas could benefit from upgrading. So that's another conversation we're having with some contacts that the mayor provided. So yes, this can be broadened, but I would suggest a focus on this area to take advantage of what seems to be significant interest.
I, I agree with Ted. I mean, I think, I, I know the service in the south part of town is suboptimal, to be kind. And I would hate to think that if, if we're going to look at a new ordinance and, and potentially a code that allows for sufficient coverage, it would cover every area that needs the attention. And, and maybe enhancing some of the existing towers will help solve that. I know we don't have many city properties on the south. I live in Whispering Oaks and the service is terrible. So I don't know how we fix that. I mean, Ted could maybe put an antenna up in his yard. That might help us all, but you know what I'm saying, so thank you.
I do.
Other comments or questions? Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on how good or bad our cell service is? I want to push this matter. Okay. Hearing none. So what I would like to ask for at this time is a motion in consideration of providing direction to city staff to draft an amendment to the city zoning code for consideration by the plan commission relating to the wireless overlay district. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to abstain. I need to abstain. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. I think the motion carries. And thank you, Director Cerniak. All right. At this time, is there anything else that the council members would like to discuss? Okay. Hearing none, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Excellent. Alderman Notes?
I'd also just like to weigh in that the selection of your advisory group, both from the resident side as well as the staff side, knowing everybody you put up there, you couldn't have asked for a better group to assemble that really understands and appreciates and the demands for coming up with a prudent design that addresses the needs, learning the lessons from what's been done well and not well in the past, and delivering the project that meets our department's needs and the city's needs and the finances' needs and our resident needs. So I commend you for that and look forward to the work product.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask for a public comment, if any. Is there anyone who would like to address the council on this matter? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you very much. At this time, we will be considering a recommendation from staff to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with Corden and Clark and Associates in the amount of one million, five hundred and six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars with a three-point-five percent contingency for a total of one million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for design, construction drawings, and cost estimating services to support the adaptive reuse of the nineteen twenty-five field court office building for the city's future police station. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second? Second.
Okay. This would be a roll call vote.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Very good. Excellent. The next item is consideration of providing direction to city staff to draft a zoning code amendment for consideration by the plan commission relating to the telecommunications wireless overlay district. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is a voice vote.